All right. It's 7:15. Please take your seats. I'll call this meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, March 3, 2015. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher. Sorry. Yes, councilmember Asher.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Atkins.
Here. Please note, this is the new agenda of the City Council as successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Are there any public comments on items either on the consent calendar or not on the calendar that you would like to speak to? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent?
Move the consent calendar.
Second. Without exception, that's all approved. There are no action items, and so I'll adjourn the successor agency meeting and move right into the City Council regular meeting. And please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our. In indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Come on up.
I'm Fetsy Cooley, resident. And I've written about this. I just wanted to make the request in person that I think that there should be -- I would appreciate it if we could have a study session before the March 17 meeting. I think that there are a number of open questions that I've asked people about was there going to be a health credit for Watergate? I mean, it came up in the context of Watergate, but I imagine it affects some other businesses that if they pay a large amount towards health insurance, is there any credit for that towards the premium, towards the minimum wage, whatever amount you should decide on? And I just want to emphasize it at the moment. I'm just trying to find out what it is you're looking at, because when it comes time to making comments, what would you think about something if you don't really know what's being proposed? It's hard, you know, it's hard to comment. And so there are a number of sort of open questions, I see, for example, whether it's going to be just a minimum wage or whether you're going to maintain the minimum, maintain the living wage in addition to the minimum wage. I asked the question. I didn't get a response, so I don't know if there's been a decision about that or it's been discussed or considered. But the other thing is, I think that the last two times it was discussed, the last two City Council meetings, it came up at the end of the evening. It was like very late and everybody was really tired, and if you had sort of a discrete amount of time before a City Council meeting started, the City Council would have more time to sort of, you know, look at these things and discuss them, and you wouldn't have the pressure of this big calendar waiting for you, because you could just take an hour and 15 minutes and hear comments and make your comments. So I'd appreciate it if you would consider doing that. Thanks. And also, it doesn't increase the timeline. That's the other thing, because it's already, it wouldn't change your timeline at all. You're still going to have the meeting on the 17th. Thanks.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things also on the minimum wage. Very briefly, I had a conversation, I know, with one council member about the definition of family. As you assign tasks to staff going forward, the definition of family, you chose the more expansive definition. I decided not to join the chorus of people who came up at the last City Council meeting. I figured this might be a more appropriate agenda to get in briefly here. I think there's one piece missing from that. There are people who, many people who have permanent disabilities do work, and they have service animals. And I think that a service animal should be defined as a family member, as somebody who has multiple people in my family who have disabilities and know people who live and work with service animals. Having a service animal not be able to have medical treatment is like having your child or your spouse needing medical treatment. And so to allay any concerns about people claiming my pet is a service animal, you could still put a reasonable restriction in that says it must be a certified service animal, but I would strongly encourage you to consider that, because it will allow people who are disabled to have equal access to employment. The second comment I had this evening is, just to give you an update, that the legislative deadline for filing bills came last Friday in Sacramento, and over 2,400 bills were filed. And so just to give you an idea, there are several very large bills this year related to affordable housing. And so if you are inclined to check them out, or if you want to ask questions of me at some point offline, AB 35, AB 1335 are the two large bills related to affordable housing development, a permanent source for affordable housing funds, and an expansion of the low-income state housing tax credit, which allows state-level nonprofit developers to leverage additional federal funds to make penciling out affordable housing more easy for them. There's a bunch of other bills and homelessness. We'll be sponsoring through ourselves. SB 252 will waive the cost of GEDs for homeless children and youth, so that those who take an alternative path through education and are homeless can get an educational equivalency. We will also be the sponsors of AB 1228, which will allow, which will require the state university system to provide on-campus housing, prioritize it for homeless children and youth who attend college, and make it available to them during breaks. And then finally, AB 447 will, there's a rather unsavory practice of insurance providers denying and terminating habitation insurance to homeowners who choose to rent their properties to people participating in the Section 8 voucher program. And it is really seriously impacting the availability of foremarket housing that's made available to low-income families. And so we are championing a bill that will add Section 8 voucher participants to the nondiscriminatory clause of the Insurance Code. Thanks.
Any other? John, you got your timing down here for three minutes. Any other public comments? Please note, there's two proclamations under consent, which I'll pull later, so in case people are here for that and wanted to speak to that, I'll pull them separately. Seeing no other public comment, is there a city manager's report?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things, just to update you on the schedule that we have right now for the minimum wage. We sent out on Friday and then some again yesterday to, I believe it was about 3,000, with letters to all of our registered businesses in town, letting them know that the next study session that we have scheduled here, that you all scheduled, is on April 7. So that is on the calendar right now, and we'll do that at the front of the meeting. And then after that, the first reading of the ordinance, so you won't take any action at the April 7 meeting. The first reading for the ordinance will be on May 5, with the second reading on May 19. So that's the schedule that we have right now. I also wanted to let you know, we are having two community workshops related to the Emery-Go-Round Shuttle, specifically the citywide property-based improvement district, or the P-Bid, which is what primarily funds the Emery-Go-Round. Two meetings. One is next Monday, March 9, 5:30 here in the council chambers, and then the second one will be on March 21. It's a Saturday, 10:00 in the morning. And it's a chance for people to come out and hear about the Emery-Go-Round, how it is currently funded, and part of some of the staff's proposals on how we want to make sure that we can sustain that funding. That's it.
Thank you. So, the motion on the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar, except for the two proclamations.
I'd like to pull 5.6. Okay.
I think staff wanted to pull 5.9. I'd like to pull it.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the rest of it.
Okay. Without exception, that's been approved. Moving on to 5.4. This is a proclamation in celebration of the 15th anniversary of arts as education and designating the month of March as Youth Art Month. And, hold on just one second here. I'd like to read this. Whereas every year, the month of March has been declared National Youth Month across the United States, and whereas March 2015 is also the 15th anniversary of art is education, a county-wide initiative to promote the integration of arts into public education, and whereas the Emory Unified School District and the Emeryville Artists Cooperative sponsor programs to promote youth art through their curriculum, and Emeryville Youth Artist in the Community and Artist in Residence programs, and whereas this is the 31st year that the cooperative venture between the school district and the Emeryville Artists Cooperative has provided youth-related art instruction, and whereas the city of Emeryville wishes to publicly recognize and support these youth art programs, its students, artists, and instructors, and whereas these programs enrich our city, residents, and business community, now therefore, I, Ruth Atkins, Mayor of Emeryville, on behalf of the Emeryville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2015 as Youth Arts Month in recognition of the 15th anniversary of the Art is Education Initiative and in affirmation of the city of Emeryville's commitment to youth art education and youth art programs proclaimed today, March 3, at a regular City Council meeting. And Sharon, did you want to speak to that? Yeah, come on up.
Sharon Wilshire, community liaison for the 45th Street Artists Cooperative, also known as the Emeryville Artist Co-op. And with the cooperative, I'm the coordinator for the Emeryville Youth Art Program. And it's actually in its 32nd year. Hard to believe, but that's how long we've been providing professional artists in the classroom and also specialized supplies to Emory Unified. And by my own admission, I got a little carried away this month with Youth Art Month, and I just think that the students and the teachers deserve it, but we do have artwork from both the high school and Annie Yates, as well as the recreation department's program, after-school program, and Child Development Center here in the link at City Hall, and it'll be up through the month of March. And City Hall is open from 9 to 5, Monday through Friday. I'm sure that if people let, I know that some of the teachers may bring some students here, so if they just check in at the front desk. And, but there'll be a few other displays of youth art around the city. So Ruby's Cafe will also have youth art in, on display through the month of March. And on Friday, March 20, Ruby's Cafe and Albert Rapola are hosting a reception for students and parents and teachers and just friends of Emory Unified. So we hope that that's from 4:30 to 6:30 on that Friday. Avenue 64 on Christie Avenue has a little gallery that's open to the public on the ground floor, and they're open Monday through Saturday, 9 to 6, and there'll be student artwork there as well. And then every Tuesday in March, and there are five Tuesdays in March, Farley's on 65th is donating a percentage of their Tuesday sales to the Emeryville Youth Art Program. And I just wanted to mention the teachers who have just been, it was really a pleasure for me this year. There are a lot of new instructors, and to be, to see the enthusiasm that they have and that the students have for them, and the work that's going on in the classroom was really exciting. So Claire Rabkin at the high school is substitute art teacher this semester, and Kara Goldstein at Annie Yates. And Kara, I was surprised to find she actually provides art for all 450 students at Annie Yates. And Sarah Stillman, who's on maternity leave, actually came by City Hall last week with her beautiful new baby and hung the incredible self-portraits, the prints that the students, her students did the first semester of the school year. With the Emeryville Youth Art Program and the Artist Co-op, Jeff Margolin and Jim Newton are, have been, have a very extensive clay program, which is both in the classroom time and after school. And then we're also going to, Sarah Kobrinsky, who's the poet laureate, is also providing a special poetry, some poetry sessions for both Annie Yates and for the high school. And I think that either in April or May, a student poem may be what's on the Emery-Go-Round as the poet for the month. So thank you very much for acknowledging arts in our schools and in other programs that the city provides. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you to everybody who's devoted so much time and energy into this for so long. I appreciate that. Moving on to the Red Cross Month, we have another proclamation here. So this is proclaiming March 2015 as American Red Cross Month in Emeryville. Whereas the American Red Cross, founded in 1881 by Clara Barton, is a leading voluntary agency chartered and authorized by Congress to provide compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters, and whereas in addition to domestic disaster relief, the American Red Cross offers services that help the needy, support and comfort for military members and their families, the collection, processing, and distribution of life-saving blood and blood products, educational programs that promote health and safety, and international relief and development programs. And whereas across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross has recently responded to disasters such as Hurricane Sandy, the West Africa Ebola epidemic, and Typhoon Ramison in the Philippines. And whereas the American Red Cross Area Chapter also helped families with temporary housing, clothing, food, and emotional support during local disasters, and has trained thousands of people in life-saving CPR, first aid, water safety, and preparedness education. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a time to recognize and thank the everyday heroes of the Red Cross, those who reach out to help those in need by volunteering their time, giving, giving blood, taking life-saving courses, or providing financial donations to help those in need, now therefore be it resolved that I, Ruth Atkins, Mayor of Emeryville, hereby proclaim March 2015 as American Red Cross Month in Emeryville, and encourage all residents to be cognizant of the compassion, courage, and civic duty that are inherent in the Red Cross mission to prevent and relieve human suffering. So, did you want to speak?
Good evening. Hi. My name is Sherri Alesworth, and I'm a member of the Alameda County Leadership Council. It is an honor to accept this proclamation from the city of Emeryville declaring March as Red Cross Month. We thank you for this honor. In 1943, during World War II, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt proclaimed the first Red Cross Month. Since that time, every president, including President Obama, has designated March as Red Cross Month. The key focuses of our chapter are providing disaster preparedness training for families and responding to disasters in the community. For 2014, there were 170 Alameda County incidents, or almost one every two days. Adults affected, 856. Children affected, 227 or 21%. For a total of 1,083 clients. Cases opened, 94. Locally active volunteers, 100. There is a great Red Cross mobile app. It will inform you about earthquakes in your area, but it will also show you how to plan ahead for them, as well as recover from them. And it's free. Go to the App Store and search for Red Cross, find earthquake, and install. And again, it's free. Through our global communication network, the American Red Cross provides emergency communications and other services, including counseling and financial assistance, such as last year to support 1,518 military families in the Bay Area. On behalf of the Alameda Leadership Council and Blood Services of the Northern California Region, again, we thank you for this proclamation. But most of all, we would like to thank you and the city staff members who have worked closely with the Red Cross to make Emeryville a better-prepared city for all types of emergencies, and we look forward to growing our relationship in 2015. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
5.6, Jack, you want to pull that?
Yeah, there were a couple of typos that I mentioned to staff that need to be corrected, the footer saying it's 2013. And a couple of details that I'd like added. There was, for example, a mention of the fact that the city keeps a list of commercial properties with the revision of the website. It was actually really hard for me to find it, so if we include the link, that's, you know, better. And overall, I would, I'm interested in seeing a bit more detail. I'm not going to hold this up and not approve it, but there are things like on page seven, where we have the program description, and then the housing program's progress report. And I understand that one of the things that we're doing here is we're talking about, you know, kind of how, we're giving an update in terms of how we comply, but this is under Goal Number 2, Policy 2A1, ensure that sufficient sites are zoned in the city to allow for development of the city's overall fair share allocation of regional, regional affordable housing needs. And I asked staff a little bit about this, and there was a discussion about the fact that this is asking about the zoning and if there's adequate zoning. But I think that it behooves us to say that even though there may be adequate zoning, that that isn't the tool that gets us to affordability. And so if I could just have that added, even if it feels like it's beyond the scope of the question, it's only because they're asking the wrong question. And so I, I just want to have the report reflect the kind of affordable housing crisis that we're in, and the need for Emeryville to look for new tools. And that's it.
Mayor Atkins, Jack, what is the language you want used, and where exactly would you insert it?
So this is on page seven, for example?
Seven of 14.
It's on the second attachment, the annual element progress report. And it's in, yeah, it's in the table. And so on page seven, Goal 2, Policy 2A1, right? So ensure that sufficient sites are zoned in the city to allow for the development of the city's overall fair share allocation of regional, regional affordable housing needs. And we can talk about what's being zoned, and we still know that we didn't meet our RENA numbers, right? And so if, you know, that's not a failing on staff, right? That's a recognition that zoning doesn't solve the problem. So I just want a note there to recognize that, that we haven't met our housing goals, right? And that we're going to be looking for new tools to do that. That it's not, that zoning is not meeting our affordable housing needs.
If I could, the housing goals that we didn't meet are RENA's, not the city of Emeryville. These are housing goals that are imposed on the city of Emeryville by the regional housing, and we have protested them from time to time. It's so...
Well, but now you could protest that they're not even good enough. I mean, there, there's not deep enough affordability. Either way, we're not, we're not meeting them.
That's right.
And I, I, I think that one of the things that we need to signal is that what we're building up is an affordability deficit from year to year, right? As we miss the numbers.
Support that. So can staff work with revising that wording?
We'll make those changes.
Oh, sure. We can make those. If you approve this report tonight with those changes, we'll certainly make those changes before we submit it to the state.
With that, I move the report.
Charlie, will, will there be any impact from the state with that kind of a change?
I don't think so.
I'd second your motion.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, and that takes us to the, oh, 5.9, are we not discussing that tonight?
Diane pulled it.
I pulled it.
Okay.
I am, I'm very excited about this skate park, skate park that's coming into fruition. I was able to take a look at the, the 3D rendering virtual tour for the first time today, and imagine where the Portland loo is going to go, and I'm satisfied that staff has, you know, I read in the staff report that we, it will impact up to six of the small re-bud trees on the south end of the park that will, they will have to be moved and ideally relocated. And I'm guessing, but I can ask Maurice directly, that this is for the plumbing of the Portland loo?
No, the relocation of the trees is, I believe it's only going to be four, but it's where the, the Portland loo's going to sit where these trees are right now. So we're going to have to remove them. We are planning on relocating them. We have a contract that we're working on to do that work. And we're working with a company that has a big spade that can pick them up, root ball and all, and transport them to other areas in the city.
Okay. Well, it's, you know, I just wanted to note that they were, these trees were being moved, and I'm glad that they are being relocated. And if there's, if there are any future plans, I thought, I just guessed it would be related to plumbing, but if there are any future developments where we could avoid having trees planted over plumbing, that's something I would be interested in talking about, but if that's not the case...
Yeah, it's not to do with plumbing. It's actually where we're putting the loo is right where the trees are.
Very good. Thank you.
I think it's important to note that you do have plans to see that that's clean twice a day.
Oh, that's going to be in the program. Oh, yes.
Yeah. Heavy use, it will.
I wanted to comment on this, and that the agreement that is in our packet omits our city living wage paragraph, so that needs to be added.
Well, they're paying prevailing wages. It's going to be higher than the living wages anyway.
Right. But all our agreements list have a section, some have a, some of our agreements have a section on both living wage and prevailing wage.
We'll look into that.
So...
We can add that provision.
You want to move approval with that addition?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That takes us to our action item, and it's with very mixed emotions we have to have this discussion. So I'm looking to council here about how to proceed with a replacement. I don't know if the city manager has thought about that and has a proposal for us tonight?
Sorry. I did, I went through the prior city manager's files on kind of the process that you all went through last time, and the proposals that you received from the recruitment firms last time. They were all very similar. And then also looked at how much you all spent, which, for the record, I believe is around order of magnitude, maybe 23,000, that you all spent on the outside recruiter. I think there are probably three things that would be helpful, maybe to help frame your discussion. So one would, one is whether or not you do want to move forward with engaging with an outside recruiter, and if so, how do you, how you want to go about doing that. The other is whether or not you want us to go ahead and immediately update the brochure that we have. We have the last one that was used, that we can update with more current information. I'm assuming the description on what the city manager is, in your mind, wouldn't change much. And we can go ahead and post that immediately, you know, to our website, but also really to the channels that both Ian and I have, to just start getting that out there, and not necessarily, if you do want to have an outside recruiter, not necessarily wait for them. And then the third is really whether or not you would like us to pursue looking at any sort of interim possibility. So I think, I don't know if that helps maybe frame your, frame your discussion a little bit.
Could you remind me what the timeline was on the last search? Like how long it took?
Sure. I know, this is the proposal, and they had a schedule in here. It says greater than, than 17 weeks. So he's got a 17-week schedule.
Uh-huh.
I would say, you know, in looking at the different pieces that they provided to you, the first one was position, profile, and organizational assessment. You probably have done that.
Yeah.
The other's development of the search strategy. Probably can do that. The other's development of the search strategy, probably can do that. It's really the other pieces, which is, you know, candidate assessment, candidate presentation, selection process, and then position closure and the negotiation. That I think, you know, we, internally, we could do, we could work on the first two pieces, would be my recommendation, and then if you wanted to engage with a consultant for the others, that might make sense.
Yeah.
But yeah, in total, it was at least 17 weeks.
Let me just start off by saying, because of the timeframe involved and the fact that Paul Camerons has worked well for us in the past, that we just ask Avery if they would assist us again.
I'd support that.
I've thought about, well, do we really need a recruiter? And at first, I thought no, but now I'm thinking, yes, we do, because we need a third party, I think, to help us evaluate what, what we have. We shouldn't rely on staff to do that. And this is a pretty important job for us as a council to select, find and select, and so I am for having some recruiter slash third party help us.
Would folks be willing for staff to update the brochure and get that?
Yes.
Out right away, though, too? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That would be, I'm in agreement with everyone, too.
And we like it done in a timely fashion, and we should be able to prove it before you send it out, because there, I picked up on two or three things.
Okay, good.
That have to be changed, and we want to make sure that they're changed, because either they don't apply anymore, or they don't, they're not germane to the question. But getting back to choosing Paul Camerons and Associates, they really did a good job.
I agree.
We are, a tight timeframe here, critical job for this city, and we're going to have to play a hard game trying to fill Sabrina's shoes. Anybody who comes in is going to have to have a star quality, and that's not easy to find. So if we can get a jumpstart on this with Camerons and Associates, Sabrina's right, the first two items can be done by Ian and Sabrina and staff, and then get Camerons and Associates cracking on the rest. But the other thing that Sabrina brought up that I think is critically important is a Plan B on an interim manager ready to hit, hit the ground running on July 1st, because this is a critical position. So I would, I would be very much in favor of moving forward tonight on all of those issues.
Do you have a strategy about suggesting an interim person if the permanent search isn't complete?
Other than knocking on doors or laying down on people's doorsteps, but I think there are some, some folks that I have some ideas on. I have not reached out to anybody at this point, just wanted to get direction from you all first.
Well, let's, let's contact Avery and let's check in with, with Paul. Let's see if he's willing and able to work with us again. I don't know if he's involved in how many other searches.
In a timely fashion.
Right.
We have to hit the ground running on this, and if you can contact him tomorrow and say, July 1st is practically here, let's get a grip and let's get going and see what he says.
Okay. Would, so another question for you, would you all want to go ahead and give us direction tonight in terms of appropriating a certain amount of money for this so that we can get it going, or do you want us to bring it back?
I'd like you to get it going.
You have a privilege up to $50,000.
You just need to give me the word on it.
Strictly a city manager, as far as I'm concerned, expense.
Right, yeah. So appropriated.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Appropriated.
All right.
All right.
Okay, great.
So this takes us to Communications and Report. Charlie?
Okay, I have two things for you tonight. First is my normal report on the last Planning Commission meeting, which occurred on last Thursday, February 26th. They had four items on their agenda for public hearings. First, they approved the final development plan for the Christie Avenue Park redesign and expansion. Secondly, they approved a new private preschool on 63rd Street, LaPorte School, that's going in the space that every dog has its daycare used to be in. Third, they approved a master sign program for the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center. And finally, they considered the Family Friendly Residential Design Guidelines. They did not approve those. They had a lengthy discussion about them. They had a lot of very good observations about things that could have been done a little better, and so they basically sent us back to the drawing board. We are continuing to work on those and hope to have them for the commission at, hopefully their March meeting, if not the April meeting. And of course, after that, they'll be coming to you for adoption. So the four items that they did approve are all appealable to the city council. That's a 15-day appeal period that runs through, let's see, that would be next Friday, March 13th, at 4:00 PM is the deadline for filing appeals. And if the city council wishes to appeal any of those items to yourselves, this would be the time to take up a motion on that. Okay. The second item is you have, you should have in front of you a little packet that's in addition to your other packet, which is two, two alternate schedules for developing the new regulations, guidelines, incentives, et cetera, for the multi-unit residential development. That's to address the issues that have been identified, such as unit mix, affordability, ownership housing, family-friendly housing, and also revamping the bonus point system. Both of these schedules are identical with the exception of a date for a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. Under both schedules, the Planning Commission would take up the consideration of the recommendations on May 28th, and then they would come to the council for your consideration for adoption on June 16th, with second reading on July 7th, and which would result in an effective date of August 6th. The thing that varies between the two options is whether to have a Tuesday evening joint meeting, which would be on Tuesday, April 14th, or a Saturday morning joint meeting, which would be on Saturday, May 2nd. I did take a look at the joint meetings that we've had between the Planning Commission and the city council over the last 10 years. We've had seven that I could identify. Most of them related to the general plan update. We did have one about parking, and we had another one a couple of years ago about the new planning regulations. Of those seven meetings, five of them were on weekday nights, one was on a Monday, one was on a Tuesday, three were on a Thursday, and two of them were on Saturdays. The ones on Saturdays typically were 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and the ones on the evening varied from starting at 6:00 to starting at 7:15, and from ending at 8:45 to ending at 11:00 PM. The last one we had on October 30th of 2012 was on a Tuesday night, and it went from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. So it's your pleasure, whether, I mean, first of all, I'm hoping that you're okay with that, this overall schedule. I've heard that, I think, most of you are. So.
Nora needs her coffee.
We'd like to know if you prefer a Tuesday or a Saturday.
Thank you, sorry.
And just to let you know, I've checked in with the chair of the Planning Commission, and he's fine with either.
I, I prefer the Tuesday evening.
Over Saturday.
I prefer Saturday.
I was one of the Tuesdays.
Well, speaking just from the point of view of the people are going to be affected, the residents of the city, it may be more convenient for us to come here on Tuesday night, it may be more convenient for the people affected if we're here on a Saturday. So I'm amenable either way, but my preference is to do what would suit best to the people who are going to be affected by this, so which would be a Saturday, I think. But I don't base that on any really statistical information.
One thing I would note is that when it is on a weekday evening, it can get kind of late, and, you know, it's, it's less productive when it gets into the late hours.
But I would say, if you have it on Saturday, 10 o'clock is too early for the Emeryville residents. I think 11 o'clock, serving a little refreshment in the break, would probably be better, 11 to 2.
And, okay.
10 o'clock's a little early for Emeryville folk.
Well, the previous one started at 9:00, but.
Oh, okay, well, are we going to be providing childcare?
We could.
We, we talked about that today, looking at that idea.
Actually, it could be a, a community event on Saturday practically, you know, with childcare, with refreshments.
You could have balloons and face painting.
Jump houses.
Yeah.
I think, Nora, you have a lot of good points there about Saturday and the general public, and I could do either.
Who will we serve?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, that we do some Saturdays, so.
All right.
But I think earlier on a Saturday, we'll get more serious people, maybe.
So we're talking 10?
Well, I was thinking 9:00 on a Saturday morning, boy, we would get things done.
Well, having gone through Emeryville early on Saturday, between 8:00 and 10:00.
All right.
And being able to shoot, not shoot a gun down the street.
Maybe we should do 10:00 then, because if you don't get people at 9:00, then it's a problem.
All right, let's start at 10:00.
And let's juice it up a little bit. Now, tell me how you're going to.
For Diana, Jack, are you able to come?
How are you going to crunch all these people up here?
I'll, I'll come, but again, I just want to make sure that we advertise that there will be childcare for people. You know, we're trying to talk about larger units and talk about families a little bit, families with kids.
Well, and we'd want the school district to send out flyers, publicizing the event to get, to get families here.
So 10 to 2 on Saturday, May 2nd? Is that what we're saying?
Right, with refreshments, with balloons, balloon houses, childcare, a band.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you very much.
Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Okay, any council members?
I just have one comment. I like to let everybody know that Emeryville's Community Services Department has started micro soccer, and they have 45 children participating.
Wow.
It is the most wonderful thing to walk down 43rd Street in the afternoon, because you see Anna Yates being used by 45 children who are learning soccer, and it ranges, the ages range from five-year-olds all the way up to 12-year-olds. And also, Community Services has our middle schoolers playing basketball. And it's, it's, it's just wonderful to see folks out there, learning these skills and working together, and also using that space in a really active, organized way during the week. So I just want to thank Community Services for putting all of that together.
Great.
And when will you be, will we be meeting our new Community Services Director?
He starts on, I think it's April 7th, 6th or 7th.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did fill in for Ruth at Alameda County Transit, and there were suggestions about some of the transit problems in Alameda County, because we have six of the 10 most congested freeways. And one of the suggestions that could affect us, but wasn't decided upon, was perhaps to have four people being a commute vehicle on 80 between Emeryville and Edging North. That, you know, that was entertained, but, you know, nothing was, Rebecca Kaplan was entertained that idea. And then, but they also talked about developing bus-only transit lanes that perhaps could affect our city in a positive way, to make things so that buses would have a bus-only dedicated lanes. They're talking about that. And Emeryville is no longer number two for traffic. Was the Bay Bridge, but now it's moved to the South County as number two, down on the new section that's been fixed up on 880. It's not that 80 hasn't lost any traffic, but it's just even worse in a few other places in Alameda County, and 680, where it goes into, you know, gets parallel to 880 down there, that's also a problem. So people are getting upset in Alameda County, I can tell you that, for how long it takes to drive anywhere in a commute hour.
All right. Well, I don't know if city manager reported at the last meeting, since I was absent, about our trip to DC, but the team Emeryville, which included the school superintendent and the school board president, John Affleck, myself, and the city manager, went last month, and in the course of two days, we had something like eight meetings with different, with the staff for our, all of our electeds. We visited a House Committee on Education. We had a couple of meetings in the Department of Ed, Department of Transportation, and I think John Affleck was able to have a separate meeting with Health and Human Services around. And this was all to identify potential funding that the city and/or the school district could go after. And I think the trip was quite worthwhile, not because we can chase earmarks like we used to, but just to be able to find out more specifically about how any of our grant applications could rise to the top and, in terms of being rated more highly. And I think in particular, that was a good learning for the school district to follow up on. Sabrina, do you want to add anything?
No, I would, I was, I mean, this was my first time doing this, and it was remarkable. I thought that there were several staff people there who were familiar with the ECCL from years ago, knew, knew the mayor from her last time out there, and were excited to see that it's a real project. And then I think that there were, on more than one occasion, the mayor and I turned to each other after leaving a congressional staff person's office and said, we're so glad we're working in local government. We actually get things done.
Right. So anyway, I just want to thank you for the authorization for that expense. I think it's, it's worthwhile. And once again, we heard a comment about how unusual our delegation is, that this committee, House Committee staffer said he'd never seen a mayor sit down with the school board, and it was, it was, it was around education. So I think we have, just our mere presence of working together sends a highly unusual message to DC that, that not only are we, that, just that we're in, in deep partnership with each other, so that was good. And then, I'm just trying to think if there's any other meetings I want to report on. I think that's it. So if there isn't anybody else, all right, this meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
Okay.